I don't know. Oh, it's not on. That's why, because I'm an idiot. Yeah, well. This is why I never show up late. So I can fix all the stuff that I didn't do right in the first place. This is why I have you around.
Do the people really like that? The livestream?
What?
Do people just always like the livestream?
I think they do.
I think they do.
Well, and it's interesting also because the, a lot of even our employees, they don't sign on to the to them. They just watch it on YouTube.
Oh, last week I was watching it on YouTube on a bus between Denver and Fort Collins.
Oh.
It's too obvious. I haven't done this in a while. Please.
Okay.
There it is. This is not a video.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
That's my prize.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
That's big, right?
That's a big girl.
Let's see.
How do you know it was a girl?
Oh, you can tell by the shape of the head.
You can tell how much I know about fish.
A lower between silk and rifle.
We were just testing. Well, I mean, there was a bunch of us. It's a guide thing.
I think I can't turn them on until something is connected.
Oh, oh, oh.
Did they get that right?
Breathing a little bit. Just to make sure.
I saw it's Alan's school.
I'm looking through the volume prints. I'll let you know if I see something.
I was just showing out my prize. I cut a 25 inch bow out of the Colorado.
Wow. Wow, and it was a turtle?
I just saw one more thing.
That's better.
Yeah, and you got a shark and um and bright.
All right. Was that like the biggest one?
Yes.
Where was it?
Uh, it's on the
Big fish down there. I've always heard that.
There it is.
There it is. Grass. That's awesome.
We have to entertain ourselves. But we're on it. It was off screen or at? We tried, I mean.
Does the big ones look tall?
Now are the ones that imitate.
But they're big, right?
Yeah, they're pretty big.
Just can't get into the whole.
So. They don't come up for drives and on the Colorado very often occasionally. Hi.
Oh, thank you. Forget who you are.
Slide by and see if any of those will post by then.
Yes.
Yeah, then I can use them then.
Sure. Oh, that was right.
Very short. It was all online. Yeah. But I got great trail user data from Brett and then Brett reached out and got the Pitt County data. So good stuff. Yeah.
Was a picture of a bunch of people on the trail.
Oh. Oh. Well, yeah, there was one in the paper a while ago that Oshman put online, but yeah, but the reality is it's not just the upper valley. It's especially to here, less so down. But yeah, really well used. Yeah, yeah. And it's also neat to see how especially in Kerbendale, the the use has spread over the year. Like it used to be summer huge drop off, but now there's also spring and fall use, especially through here. All good.
Just not to get into trouble.
Please. Okay. Thank you. I don't know what's on.
Are we ready? Okay. Getting you everyone. Tonight we have a work session, pretty short agenda, three items on it. We're going to start with a discussion. We have 40 minutes allocated for just an update and discussion and direction probably on our path to net zero for existing buildings. At 6:40, we're going to have some folks from ArtSpace join us remotely for an update on the town center housing project. And then that'll be brief. And at about 6:50, we will talk about solar requirements and policies for multifamily housing with the goal of clarifying what our intent was there and discussing whether there are any waivers for for any types of projects under those requirements. So let's kick it off with Pat's net zero. We've got Jeff and Heidi and Zuleka, Jared. I don't know who's leading this, but come on up and join us, folks. It's a work session, so it's a little less formal than other meetings.
Move some of these chairs around.
You sure can, Zuleka. You do whatever you need there.
That's what I say every
Did we have more mics and then we lost some of them? Or is this what we have? Yeah, I thought we had more to cover all these tables and raft of meetings, but maybe not. So we're missing Chris. I don't know. I thought we had enough that we could have all seven trustees plus staff plus other people, but maybe not. Maybe we need to buy more mics again.
I think one is good for us.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Next project cycle.
I'm just joining the Zoom meeting so I can share my screen.
Okay. Hi, JV. This is the right room. You're a little early, but you're welcome to join us. We're going to talk about other things till about 6:50.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. That's at 6:40.
Oh, is this? Sorry, I I'm sorry. We'll get there.
While we're waiting, reminder, the pre-board meeting is 20 AM. Six o'clock in the room is invited. Auction rep and the tree board. Alvarez, new Alvarez from other towns.
Thanks, Marty. I really want to be there, but I've been asked to come to a school board meeting as well at the same time. So we'll see if I can be in two places at once.
Or not anywhere at all.
Thursday, the 20th part? Okay.
Six. Six. Excellent. And I wouldn't be surprised if there were members of the press there.
Our tree ward and picture on
No, does it? Well, they discovered some in Littleton, so.
It doesn't be essential to share a screen. I just thought it's just.
No, I think it. I think it makes sense. Yeah, it just won't let me.
Rodeo Saturday.
And everybody did receive in the packet the document that we'd be looking at. We just thought it'd be nice to put it up on the screen as well. If we just isn't happening.
Yeah. The table?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess somebody else could put it on the screen. Are you guys all on the Zoom meeting? No, I was just gonna say we could all just pull it up on our own.
Oh, pull it up in your own screens. Yeah, this does not seem to want to let me join your meeting.
And it is the carbonell path net zero for existing buildings. Draft notice dated July 18th, 2023 that was in your packet that we were just, we were just going to look at and walk through and we're prepared to take notes of anyone's input.
Yeah, well, let me do it. It won't give me the continue button. Yeah. So.
Let's just go. We've got it.
Sorry.
It's not a whole lot of public here, so I think we can. We can just go with it. So let's just clarify our our goal this evening before we get started. So what's our goal with this discussion?
Yeah, so we want to acknowledge that encouraging, finding ways to encourage people who own existing buildings to do the necessary upgrades to get us on our path to net zero for all buildings in Carbonell is a little bit trickier than new construction where we can write things into code and anything new is going to be up to the standards that we want them to be. With the existing buildings, you know, we have to kind of use other modes and ways of of encouraging people to do these things. So after going through this path that we've come up with for existing buildings, what we would like is for the Board of Trustees to after we've fixed it in whatever way we need to fix it, to vote to adopt it at a subsequent regular meeting when you guys can vote. So that, you know, we know that this is the path that we're taking and we know that we as clear can get started on some of these action items before it's too late.
Okay. And I would just say that before we get into sort of the things that we're going to require of people, I think that there's a lot of people who are ready to make these kinds of shifts right now, but they have a hard time knowing what to do, finding the contractor to install the heat pump, finding something that they can afford. So I think that for the next couple of years, if we're focused a lot on making it easy to do the right thing, that's a really good move and building momentum around that and building local capacity. It seems like electrification is the the way to go. And if we can make it easy for people that want to electrify to electrify their existing buildings and then get a lot of momentum behind that before we start kind of bringing the hammer down on people, I think that that's probably the best approach.
And this
last six to 12 months doing we got over the condos over on Soho on West and we were able to electrify 25% of our places, all the people that wanted it. Got a great contractor from the Mitsubishi website. They were there on time, reasonable. Everybody's happy. So I think a year ago would have been like, uh huh. So it's really, it is happening, but I agree, we need more help. I mean, that's what cleared with their list of contractors and that sort of thing.
The bottleneck in backlog and getting contractors to show up, the whole supply chain issue stuff, some of that pressure is letting up and at the same time for buildings other than residential buildings, more and more equipment's becoming available. There are just a few key products in both residential and public buildings that could really make this process a lot easier.
Right.
And the town, you know, could there could, there could be potentially be more examples of other technologies available here soon, too. Things like geothermal.
And I, and I don't think that this this plan, it doesn't include the stick version of encouraging people to do things. I guess it's not really the carrots either, but it's just a way to kind of catch people when they're doing things. Yeah, we don't have we don't have, we don't, we're not suggesting that there's some consequence for not doing it, which is maybe something we should talk about. As far as, you know, how are we going to make sure that if we adopt this, that that people actually do it, but at least it it's considering the difficulty of existing buildings and
and yeah, kind of just to reiterate, this document doesn't outline necessarily the specifics of how to implement these ideas and concepts. And I mean, it goes pretty far out. So some of these things, it may be an iterative process.
Yep.
Then just a quick point of clarification is so the last time you guys presented on the site was under the impression that we kind of said yes.
That was the document that appears the same, looks the same in every way, but was referring to new construction. So
That was back in the fall.
Is a path to net zero. The document looks the same. It's broken out similarly. But it was for new construction as opposed to existing buildings.
Okay.
So it would be very easy to confuse the two.
Yeah, you did adopt the new construction, but now your direction was spend a little more time with this than we've seen it. Bring it back to us. We will have a further discussion just on this side of it.
Great. Just to point of further clarification, because I appreciate that call, and I get a little confused where we are in this every time as well. If we say, okay, we're going to bring this back on CONSID agenda and we're going to adopt this plan, there's still further work where we have to then adopt the actual like code language if we're going to require something. So that still is just sort of a a resolution and support. This is our plan. But then each time that we're going to actually require something, we have to actually encode that.
Right, which just since that's a great segue into the new construction. Jeff does have a document that we put together for the new construction, like what we said we wanted to do this year, and it's all been on hold because we didn't have a building official. And so there's, you know, quite a lot that still needs to be done
Okay.
for new construction for this year.
Okay.
But it's all part of the plan.
Yeah, let's tackle this. I'm just conscious of time and it's going to go quickly. So do you want to start at the top and walk us through each one? Or what do you want to do?
I don't feel like we need to.
No, no, no. Yeah. Yeah. So and so I will just, Jeff and Heidi, you guys just jump in whenever you feel like there needs more whatever. Okay, so this commercial, this more whatevers. Commercial benchmarking is that first line. So benchmarking is when you, when each building, you know, in this over a certain size is going to put all of their energy use data into the Energy Star Portfolio Manager to give them a baseline of the energy that they're using now in that building. So in this year, we we say we should start at 20,000 square foot buildings. We have a list of those with some clarification that needs to be done, I think.
There are 23 meters, right?
Yeah, well, these are sites.
Sites, okay.
That have buildings that are over, over 20,000 square feet. I'm a little unsure if some of these are the entire facility or if they're actually just the square footage, the individual building. So I have to get in touch with the assessor and clarify that. But we do have that beginning list of these 23 commercial or sites, you know, with the county from the assessor's office that at least represent over 20,000 square feet at the, at the facility. So I think there's probably going to be a few less, around 20 probably, actual buildings.
Yeah, this mirrors the state's requirements. They were at 50 this year. They've gone, I think, to 25.
Yeah.
So we've knocked it down to 20 because we don't have many buildings in that base. What, what's the approach for multi-tenant buildings that are in this category?
There are a lot of specifics that we have not figured out. But that's part of also me figuring out what we're really looking at in the square footage buildings. There, the final language isn't, is not written is not decided at this point. Most likely. It, I mean, it's going to be easiest for us to start with single ownership buildings. And there's going to be some conversation to figure out what's even legal in buildings where there's multiple owners, not just renters. As long as it's, you know, a single owner and multiple businesses, that's easy. There's a single owner of the building. But if there are multiple owners in slices of one physical structure, we'll have to figure that out. Chances are the slices are going to be what is considered. The part that
I was just thinking more from just the accounting perspective of you don't have one meter, you have 20.
These are sites, not meters.
Right, but in, in, in a unit, in a multi.
Yeah, it's not about, it isn't about. Is if there's central ownership of that building. We're looking at the building in that case. So it's not about meters, renters, leases, anything like that. We'd be, we would be addressing the owner of the building. There would be one owner, multiple tenants.
Yeah, I'm just saying that to do the benchmarking, it's not just like one, you know, two, a gas and electric bill per month. It could be 10 or 20 gas.
There are a lot of considerations that are not covered in this document on many, many levels. We do not anticipate anyone in this room doing that entering of data. There's someone that will be a responsible party to actually enter the data. And it's not, not us.
Okay, I think Eric has a question.
Well, I was just gonna clarify and thanks for diving into the details because that's what we want to do, but because I would love to and I will outside of this meeting with you. But I think overall the idea is just like, here's our plan and there's a lot to work out for every single little square of items. There's a lot of questions that people are going to have, and I'm sure you guys even have as you create this. So I was before Freddie even said anything was just going to say, let's just keep in mind this is an overview of a plan and there's a ton of details that would have to be worked on all of this.
Luckily, this is being done elsewhere in the state, so there are models to follow.
Yeah. Yeah, just.
Part of the intent of this document is this will help you create clear scope of work for next year and years on. So they'll know to not waste their time with something that you guys don't approve.
Yeah. And as far as the state roadmap, so you said they're at 50, but if they're going down to 25, when are they going down to 25? Like, I'm wondering if there's some logic to considering staying on. We always like to be ahead of things because we're Kerbendale. At the same time, if it's going to cause a lot of extra work and expense on the local level and it was going to be done at state level a year later, I would consider looking at where we are in parallel to that.
I think we might.
Reason for bringing it lower was if it was 50,000 square foot buildings.
It's just one or two. Yeah.
You know, so.
I think we have three.
Getting them lower to three. Whatever, you know, the point is.
Right. But I'm wondering when they're ratcheting down. You mentioned 25,000.
That was at Denver. We got that report from Denver.
Yeah, so I just got an email today about Denver's program and they have a deadline. I, that's Denver's program. 25,000 square feet is Denver's program and I don't know about the state.
Is there a different, is there a significant number of buildings between 20 and 25,000? Is that
We have that.
Make a difference to us?
In my first assessment where I said, you know, I've got to still assess out sites from buildings. I see that we have 16 buildings that are over 25,000 and 23 buildings that are over 20,000, those are approximately, those numbers are not accurate, but they should be close to give us a sense.
So that, that's a pretty significant number of buildings getting, extra buildings getting benchmarked. Which is more costs, but more impact too.
Yeah, I just want to be conscious of like capacity. And if we're leading the state by a year on something, just to sort of wave our flag, I want to be careful there. I want to rely on some statewide things. I mean, kind of like I mean, kind of like we're doing with our plastics plan. We kind of put that on hold because there's a big thing happening at state level. And if that can get ninety percent of the job done, then um, I'd rely on that, but.
That's a, that's a good point. And that wasn't the intent to wave our flag wider and higher. It's the. It's to actually match what car build population is.
And our, and our building stock, our commercial building stock. Yeah.
And do we have any idea like what this would entail for a building owner as far as costs or hours of labor?
Free. It's very quick.
Okay.
The most complex thing, as Fred pointed out, will be multiple meters.
Okay.
Um, but this is a, a free tool that's used nationwide for this exact, um.
Okay.
It's a DOE product, you know, that they can download.
But CMC is doing theirs, following all their campus, because that would be a building, the facilities manager, the authority. It's entering the data, it's entering the utility bills, square footers, the building, pretty much. So it's not like so complicated.
I wouldn't underestimate how difficult it is to get people to do it though.
Yeah, I mean, I've done it. I've gone through like workshop and I've done it. It, the work itself is simple. Erica's point is um, you know, that building owner who owns that twenty five year old strip mall building that has four tenants in it. Getting them to collect those bills, however they need to do it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the commercial benchmarking? We'll keep moving, Colin?
No, I just added, I mean, but this is critical. We need this information or else we really can't.
Yeah, we, we won't have any idea what's happening with those.
Whether, whether people do anything or not, it's kind of like the short-term rentals. We didn't have any information. Now we do.
Yeah.
And now we can plan if, if this goes well, we'll have a better sense of how do we incentivize people to do what we'd like them to do. And obviously, it's probably gonna be money. Uh, but that gives us some time to figure this all out.
And in, and speaking of time, we weren't gonna go through each individual year, but um, as each year goes past, you can see that it ratchets down to smaller buildings to encompass more of the commercial buildings in town. And that just grows your baseline data. You'll also notice this, this part about public disclosure of usage. We talked a little bit about that today about kind of what the purpose of that is, and that is to publicly encourage people, building owners to, um, to take this on. I don't think this is an uh, outside of what's normal in, in a program like this. Um, but I did want to kind of point out that, um, you know, the idea is that these are, this is publicly available data.
And there is a lot to figure out about that.
Yes.
We just, we know that. So um, there will be a lot of details. Other jurisdictions are doing this, but um, we're not sure what they're doing with what types of utility data and how it's done.
Okay. Keep moving then, commercial upgrades?
Yeah, so um, so this is, you know, a lot of lighting contractors. We see just in the, with the rebate processing that we do for the city of Glenwood, that almost all of the commercial program, um, rebates that we help with are lighting upgrades and it's a huge savings um, for commercial buildings. So um, this starts with lighting upgrades or lighting audits. So a lot of the big lighting companies will come and do an audit um, for free or for uh, an ex, whatever amount of money for the business. I, I think some of them are free and um, this would just start with again, those biggest buildings. Um, we had a discussion today about changing this fifteen thousand square feet back up to twenty thousand square feet so that they just kind of follow each other along. Um, so I didn't want to change that, you know, I want you to know that we are, that's what we would like to do is change that back to twenty thousand. Um, so that they, the commercial building progress is the same. Over time, they also have to do the upgrades. So it starts with the audits, then um, the upgrades, um, and then the retro commissioning. I'm gonna let Heidi talk about, or Heidi or Jeff talk about the retro commissioning.
No, I mean, the overall though, it's the low hanging, starting with the lowest thing, lighting on it. Then the commissioning, which is just if we've done all the town facilities, making sure the thermostats are programmed right, pretty much.
It's just an assessment of building controls and we tend to see big savings, energy savings without um, massive financial input from the business owners.
And um.
Glenwood, what do you do with Glenwood? Does Glenwood have natural incentives for the retro fix?
Yeah, they have rebates.
And does Excel and do our utilities have those similar?
Yes.
They're different for retro commissioning specifically?
No, lighting.
Oh, for lighting, yeah. Um, all of our utilities in our area offer lighting rebates and Glenwood Springs is actually quite generous. Um, and yeah, that, that is the one, it's the easiest place for us to get rebates for commercial buildings.
Do you think you get a lot of free riders in there? People who just are just gonna do.
Mostly. Yes, mostly. Yes, that's fine. But this would be driving that. I mean, this would, this would be, um, so as it is right now, and someone decides to go do a lighting retrofit, then they go look for the rebates. That's how that's working. All over the country. Um, the idea is that once this is implemented, this is a, a plan and a path to encourage people to do it who are not planning on doing it anyway. Um, to move, to drive measurements installment, implementation.
And then it's not until twenty thirty that we start to get into um, renewable requirements or expectations. So you know, we're ways out on that. On those kinds of mandatory requirements, but that is the intent. We're gonna meet our goals to get to that zero. It's gonna require some serious change from all sectors of the economy.
That's the stuff that is kind of scary to start to require someone to do. What do you think about how, how to implement that? Um, but it, if this is the goal.
And with the um, lighting audits and then the, it sounds like there's rebates for the retrofit um, or upgrade, but who do we anticipate paying for like the lighting audit and the retro commissioning?
Luckily around here, you can get a pretty thorough lighting audit for free around here.
Great.
Um, there are companies that will charge you for it. There are also a handful that, that won't. Um, retro commissioning with an engineering firm can be expensive. Um, Excel has, has mentioned um, using, doing a, they do have, so they've talked about doing custom rebates on buildings where it didn't obviously comply. We have some sway with Glenwood Springs. I think Glenwood Springs retro fish, retro commissioning is actually already called out, I think.
I don't know about the.
And I, I gotta be honest, I don't know about Holy Cross, but um, these are things that we have some voice in.
Okay. Yeah, I think as, as we get toward the requiring these things, we want to be careful about going to businesses and saying, you have to do this and it's gonna cost you thousands of dollars. We'd rather go and say, you have to do this and we're gonna, we're gonna help you do it.
That is going to happen and it is going to be painful, but if the idea is to move the nets, the buildings to net zero in the town of Carbondale.
Yeah, they're gonna have to put some money in. There will be rebates. There will be money available for most of these things. But the building owners will absolutely have to pay for most of it. Well, and I, I think that should be part of it though, is that, and maybe it's a fine, you know, a line or maybe when you compile these documents that um, we have to think about what, what we pay to do it.
Yeah.
Because I do think um, the uh, we have some big building owners, which you've identified in your list, but we have also lots of small businesses and small building owners. And paying for an eight thousand dollar retro commissioning uh, is a chunk of change. And so um, but you know, like it was, I mean, one of the projects I worked on was actually with Thunder River Theater and it was amazing how expensive it was. And only because of their size did we get the Excel rebate um, that covered it. And so I think we just have to be cognizant that there are, I don't want us to go out and be like, well, the, the businesses are just gonna have to pitch in. We should just be aware that if we're gonna set the goals, we're gonna make the plan that we might have to cover eighty percent of that cost or work with the state on what kind of incentives are they gonna be providing or what's coming down? So that we can make it doable for our businesses.
And I jumped into the next one about town buildings, like education where we're starting to say, okay, we're, we're looking at town hall right now. That would be the first one. But to get all, you know, a, you know, ten or twelve buildings in town, it's gonna cost the town money. But that's not gonna be for a while. So there's, it's like future budgeting. Like, okay, in twenty twenty seven, we're gonna need to put money for what, what you're mentioning and for the physical upgrades for the town or mill.
Yeah. So I do think that would actually be a helpful addition to the table is maybe at the bottom. It's like, maybe not a funding amount, but just so we don't forget. And so others, you know, if we adopt this, that we're acknowledging that we're gonna need to put in money to make all of it happen. Or we're gonna have to find funding. I shouldn't say we, we don't have to put in all of it, but we're gonna have to be part of the puzzle of figuring out the funding. Yeah.
You have other thoughts on that one? Agree with Erica. I think being cognizant of the costs and yeah, when we, we can probably approve the plan pretty soon as a general target. And then when we come back for, okay, you know, starting in January first, we're gonna require this. Then that's when we'll need to have a funding plan in place. And it sounds like we don't want to put that burden entirely on the businesses that we're requiring if we're going out in front of what the state's requiring.
Um, so then town building electrification, um, we, we are working on town hall now, um, and, and getting that going. So that, well, it's twenty twenty three should say town hall. Uh, no, no, just because we've got, it's ten minutes. Um, and then um, I did make a note um, for ourselves that we could plan this out more specifically than it is laid out right here. Where we could call out the buildings and in which order they should be done. And Jeff made a really good point that we also have to leave some flexibility for if a building that wasn't planned until later, if their systems fail, then they need to go first. And we don't want to um, you know, be replacing a gas furnace with a gas furnace just because it wasn't on the electrification plan. So kind of keeping that in mind. And um, so if it would be helpful to kind of see the buildings called out over the years, um, we can do that. If it, if it doesn't matter at this point, we just know, we're just gonna go with the largest use buildings and down the line, we can, we can leave it as is.
I think that sounds great to add the specific buildings there, just so that anybody can look at it and see it. Sean?
I just wanna totally support that because the theater itself is at about eighteen years now on its current age back. And we've already had conversations starting with Claire about how to look ahead at what it would be. So I definitely know that we would be very interested in any sort of help. But then there's also the fun art space. Um, you know, town center building coming up around. So we don't know quite what the shape of the end result will be. So uh, this, you definitely make interesting things to think about.
I have a question. Would you have a sense of the trajectory of the tax credits that either a commercial or anybody might receive to offset? You know, the um, initial capital outlay?
Well, there's significant money coming through the Inflation Reduction Act. I don't actually, I'm not really familiar with the commercial rebates that are available through that program. I'm much, well, there's not a lot to be known yet about the residential program either, except that we know the amounts that are available. Um, but we don't know how Colorado is gonna roll that out. Um, we're hoping that we'll know that before the end of the year and that rebates will be available in twenty twenty four. Do you have a sense about the commercial?
Tax credits are already available. Um, there is um, what the phrase is direct pay for entities that don't have a tax liability. That's functionally like cash and lieu, but it is mostly for um, renewables and EV um, infrastructure. But the town, you know, is eligible for that. Any jurisdiction is. So any organization that is embarking on any sort of renewable energy or EV infrastructure project um, will be eligible for a direct pay option um, to help them take advantage of a tax credit when they don't have tax liability. So there's that. And then um, beyond that, most of the form for um, jurisdictions, public buildings and even large commercial projects, a lot of that money is coming in the form of grants. Um, so but outside of the tax credits and the direct pay, there's a lot of grant funding.
Okay, thank you.
For big projects.
There is also, I think, tax deductions for efficiency projects as part of the IRA that come down. And so.
Yeah.
Again, I think that would just be part of rolling this out is obviously, here's how a commercial project can get this done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because then there's also the Clean Energy Fund financing, you know, so there's a lot of availability.
And when I said grant funding, I mean, there's, there, that funding is coming in different ways, you know, the Colorado Clean Energy Fund, but it's um, for the bigger projects, it's not so much really a rebate. It's looking at taxes or funding.
Okay, so we were on town buildings. Any other questions about town buildings? Sounds like maybe adding, if we've already determined what those are, adding them in?
Yeah. Um, and then so existing homes renovations, I just want to make a, a note that um, we have uh, two lines down, existing homes additions and alterations. Those should all be together. They're kind of just two different um, trigger points, but they should, we're going to combine those. Um, as it's all more or less the same stuff. Um, you know, we want to find, what are those, define the trigger points that will um, uh, make getting a home energy score mandatory. And then also um, uh, eventually, you know, PV and beneficial electrification. So we start with the home energy score and then over the years, we add um, kind of the, the actual upgrades of renewables and um, electrification. Uh, right now, you know, as, as, as we, as we've brainstormed and we're open to other ideas as well, the kind of the obvious triggers are when you build, um, pull a building permit. When you get your house appraised or when you refinance your home and when you sell it, if you list it to sell, um, which isn't on that.
And those are being done in other jurisdictions. So that's a model that um, there's already documentation of how did folks implement it or how did jurisdictions implement it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Fred? One question. Um, do we need, do people need to pull a building permit or um, furnace replacement or air conditioning replacement?
No, I don't think so.
Because I, I was reading what Denver is doing on their beneficial electrification. I think with both commercial and residential, one of their trigger points is any replacement of furnace, I mean, after next year, you're, you're required to get a heat pump or commit documentation that it would have been impossible or unbelievably costly.
And some jurisdictions are just starting to require the permit without the electrification requirement yet. So they have the documentation of when a system was installed as a half step to that. It's just a, Portland is, is looking at a stuff like that, you know?
Okay, I just, like I said, I just saw what Denver.
Yeah.
Direct here.
Yeah.
And you know, the, the, the reason to do that is if you're spending eight thousand dollars on your furnace replacement, a heat pump to sixteen thousand and you get five thousand, eight thousand, tax credits, all of a sudden it's a wash. If you put in that eight thousand dollar furnace and five years later or whatever, you can dumb else in your home, you hit one of these trigger points and be like, well, now it's just sixteen thousand dollars, I'm gonna spend that. Because my furnace is still fine.
Yeah, it seems like it might be worth considering adding that to the trigger points replacement of a core.
And again, that means the town would have to.
Twenty seven, I think, is when we brought that in.
Oh, okay.
Your player permits.
We should look, just keep track of what Denver, Denver's experience is whether people's activity or not.
Got it in twenty seven. So maybe that makes sense because I think the gradual rollout of this still makes sense.
Yeah, we're not beginning things. These programs are happening around the state, so it's.
Okay. Okay, so we're looking at the next couple of years is creating the trigger points and then starting to use them. And then, don't you have something going this year where there's like a voluntary, if you want a home energy score, we're gonna get a hundred of those and we're gonna see how that turns out?
Yeah. Yeah, we're hopefully launching that like first week of August. Um, and it will be voluntary. People can sign up to have the home energy score performed on their home. And then um, you know, with, with this grand idea that everybody in Carbondale eventually will have one and will have a very clear idea of the, you know, focus, focused houses, focused houses to get upgrades done on.
The idea with the pilot would be to create a little interest, give us something to talk about, to like make some media stories and coverage and just get folks talking.
And, and see if it works to encourage people to do upgrades because.
And figure out what we need to do differently. As we keep saying, there aren't a lot of details in, in this document. Um, that'll probably refine whatever process for implementation we can work with. The, and just to point out, the big picture is not that years down the road that Claire would be doing those assessments. The big picture is that the market would be doing it, uh, mostly real estate professionals. It's who's doing it nationwide in general.
What's the total cost for home energy assessment? Are these first hundred um, free or?
So it's a home, it, the home energy score is considered a home, home energy assessment light. It's a lighter version. Um, I think, you know, that, again, since we're looking at contractors in the big picture, they would be able to charge whatever they want, but typically it's under a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and the assessor is capable of leaving the homeowner with the assessment document with the report right then and there if they choose to do it that way. Um, so it's not a big, complex and onerous process, but it leaves them with a suggested scope of work.
Okay. And what, what about these, the, the pilot, the first hundred that you?
They're free, brief to the homeowner.
And the way that is getting paid for is through our contract. I'll be doing assessments.
And that's, we're paying for those.
You are paying for this.
And that's about, is it four hundred each or something like that?
Oh, no, that's why I was clarifying that this is not a true assessment, the home energy score. What was the breakdown on the price?
I feel like we, it was like maybe one seventy.
I feel like we, it was like maybe one seventy to two hundred, but that includes like some of the administrative time as well. Yeah, it's, there's an administrative fee that we have to pay to someone who reports to the, um. DOE with us.
Yeah, that's where it does make sense to couple it with, you're already spending money on something. You know, sort of as Fred said, whether it's a big ticket item or whether it's an appraisal or refinance or whatever, and then this, this doesn't seem that big to add.
Very, just very, very quickly, when I said it's usually real estate professionals that in most of the country are doing this work, it's either an appraiser. Or a home inspector most often and some real estate, um, agencies actually just have someone verified. So that when there's a real estate transaction, it's being done by someone who is already crawling around in crawl space.
Makes sense.
That's the way it's been working mostly on the West Coast.
Any other questions or thoughts on those trigger points? Okay.
And this goes into the home energy score, so completing the pilot project this year. Um, and then next year, looking at, um, getting other professionals on board and able to, and able to do these scores. Uh, and then of course, going further down the line with requiring the home energy score. And, um, at, again, at certain trigger points and also the listing of sale. And then eventually requiring upgrades if you score, if your house scores a certain level or below. And requiring at least a single point increase. And how we make them do that, I'm not.
The assessor leaves them has a, uh, recommended scope of work and shows them how many points. This would change their score if they made these improvements. So it's not just entirely left up to the homeowner to figure out what to do and. Yeah, somebody has to come back, you know?
Yeah. And then finally, um, this last one is, um, the beneficial electrification and, um, and solar or, uh, renewables. Uh, you know, we want to always start with, for the most part, with efficiency upgrades. Make your home more efficient before you spend a lot of money on, uh, the bigger ticket items like a heat pump or solar. Uh, so start with the efficiency upgrades and then slowly over time, add, um, renewable energy. Battery readiness and then eventually, um, battery storage and HVAC, um, replacement. Um, so that's. Yeah, that's it. So it covers commercial and residential. Oh, one thing that we haven't really included in the, in this, and, and I feel like we do need a plan for it. Though I don't know to what extent it exists in Carbondale is, um, outdoor energy uses, so spas and. I don't know, heated driveways and whatever other energy use like the, um, rent program in, uh, Aspen and in Eagle County. Um, yeah, we don't, we haven't included that specifically or called it out. But I don't, it does feel like that's a thing that we should also specifically talk about and how to reduce.
And that's sort of on the list for when the new building official comes. And when, when we, when we want to revamp the residential program and have, have an amendment. So I think that would be, that's definitely on the list.
Okay.
On the, on the, um, battery storage, is that a hundred percent battery storage? That's to make these systems more valuable to the grid essentially, or, um.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, obviously PV is one thing, but, you know, batteries are at a whole other level of, of expense and resource intensity.
Maybe by.
Twenty forty, twenty fifty goal.
Twenty thirty, yeah.
That's our best guess. It's the one that will make sense.
Uh, of, as you said, starting with efficiency, then going toward electrification. And then generating your own power and storing it if, if needed at that point, right? If the grid has gotten green and is reliable, then maybe we don't have to mandate that and it's a choice people can make.
That technology is some of the technologies moving fastest right now and will become more affordable and there'll be more options. Listen to me being the optimist for once, but, um, this, it shouldn't be at the, um, as insurmountable. As it is today to do that in the future also, and this is part of what makes the grid work for electrification.
We're right at time. So any other thoughts on this for now? This is sort of second pass at this. It sounds like there's some revisions to be made. It sounds like you have support for those, including aligning the, um, square footage requirement of benchmarking and upgrades to be both twenty thousand. And then we'll see this sort of piece by piece as there's something that comes forward to actually be put into the code. And I think that's, I think we always want to make sure that there's good outreach to the building community and homeowner community and stuff like that. Before we actually put something into the code, um, to make sure it's going to be workable. But for now, it's a, it's a goal and it's a, it's a vision and it's a pathway.
Yeah.
Last thoughts, Chris?
Question is just whether, yeah, Claire feels like it has the bandwidth to handhold people on a lot of these different things.
I think, you know, it's still to be determined how much of this we are implementing, right? This isn't us being like, we'll do this, we'll take care of this, guys. You just have to tell us that we're good to go. Um, I think there are parts of it that are definitely in our wheelhouse and that we can take on confidently. And then there are other pieces that probably needs to be someone else.
And I think along those lines, again, wherever we can be consistent with what either municipalities around us are doing. So that it's consistent for everybody or what the state is doing or what the federal, you know, like if we need to tweak this to say, well. Sort of becomes paid for by somebody else if we wrap it into this other program and it's, it's a year off or the, the numbers aren't quite what we thought. Let's do that. Let's, let's use other people's resources and the bigger communities and the federal and state governments. Resources to help us move in this direction.
Yeah.
I didn't say that we are heavily doing it.
Yeah, that's great.
And that's, you know, been the intent behind adopting these international codes.
Yeah.
Rather than writing our own ones.
Great.
I guess as we define this plan more over time, I think just trying to identify those places where. But maybe especially where clear, where we feel like there's a gap, there's nobody. It's not, not clear and not the town necessarily, not the private sector. Who is going to do that?
Yeah.
I mean, scuffle work for clear for future years, budgeting for town, that all, this will help inform some of those decisions, I think.
Okay.
Fred, you had a last thought?
For having that long.
Well, one countervailing thought to what you're talking about, kind of keeping in tune with slower processes. Is that, uh, the IRA and I think the state tax credits for coupons and maybe some other. Uh, pieces of equipment do expire.
Right.
Do have expiration dates. That, you know, will get closer and will come up faster than we think they, they will.
And we're going to go through the money that's allocated to Colorado really quickly every year. I think, you know, I think it'll be, there'll be, um, competitive rebates.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you for that. I think we'll return to some similar, some other issues related to this in a few minutes. But we're going to now take a, an update on, uh, the town center project. So whoever's here for Town Center, please join us. I think we've got some people joining remotely as well. Switch our screen up there and get this all set. We've got a piece of paper on our desks here that we can take a look at while they're getting set up. We have this.
Okay, yeah, that's great. I have a few more copies here. I was going to put off the screen if needed, but it's just one sheet, so we can probably do it that way.
Okay, uh, why don't we start with introductions and is there anybody joining us online or?
Yeah, Andrew Michael's going to join us.
Hi, I'm, I'm logged in. Can folks see me, hear me?
I can hear you.
Wonderful.
All right, we can't see you right now, so just make sure. Oh, there you are. Perfect. Hi, Andrew.
Hi there. Hi, good to see you all again. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Let's, let's start with introductions and then, um, give your update.
Great, uh, well, uh, thanks again for allowing us to come in. My name's Andrew Michelson. I'm from Art Space Projects. I am project manager of our Carbondale effort. Uh, as well as some of our other projects we've been, uh, advancing in Colorado across the country. Um, very happy to be in front of, uh, the town board again this evening. We gave an update. It was that we had selected the team of Ramsey and JV and their respective. Organizations to be our design partners for the town center project. And, uh, since that meeting, we have been working with them, um, pretty quickly in establishing. The baselines around known space needs, some of the goals we want to try and advance on the site. Uh, but also a big part of that has been, uh, connecting with those known stakeholders as well as developing a plan. To, uh, further our outreach into the community to ensure that we're touching a lot of those other communities that. Might have an interest or desires for the town center project in addition to, uh, just, you know, the, the updates we're giving to this. Town board, we want to make sure we're getting out in front of the community. And, um, uh, really pleased with a plan that Ramsey and JV have put together and I'll let them introduce themselves here in a minute. And then walk through, uh, that plan that we're pretty quickly going to be implementing to, to begin that outreach. Ultimately lead to a shred a little bit later this year. So with that said, um, uh, we do have, I can see. Uh, both Ramsey and JV are present. JV DeSosa, um, is our, our team member out of Boulder. He's got a lot of, uh, affordable housing experience and he's done some work in Carbondale. And Ramsey, I think you all know, is, uh, present and local to Carbondale, also has quite a bit of development experience. Uh, related to the kind of projects we're advancing. So I'll let them pick and choose between themselves who would like to go first and I'll hand it on.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll, I guess I'll start, um, real quick. Ramsey Fulton and this is JV DeSosa and we're, um, we've been working with Art Space for a while now. And, uh, we're, um, basically here tonight to give you guys a, a general update on just where we are and what we've been up to. And also just kind of get some feedback on the plan we have for public outreach and just see if it's in alignment with what you guys think we should be doing and. Uh, any suggestions. It's, it's a draft form, even though we want to jump into the first event rather quickly. Because, um, time is sort of of the essence that we get moving into design after, uh, September. So that we can, um, uh, get ready for the end of the year sort of grand cycle things that you don't want to lose track of.
Great. Can you just make sure your mic's on, Ramsey? If the red light should be on. Okay.
There you go. That better?
Yeah, that's better. And that'll, Andrew, hear you as well.
All right. Well, um, with that said, so just for, for starters, kind of a brief on our team real quick. Um, right now, we're kind of working, uh, hand in hand with, with Andy Corber, Atlanta Shelter and, uh, Elise and Heather Henry. At, at, uh, Connect One and JV and myself, and then of course Jeff Dahl and, and other partners of our firms. Uh, to kind of develop, we, we started by thinking about what, um, what is the purpose of, of community outreach? And what we're trying to gain. And obviously my very first step to take was to analyze all the documents that we had to date about. Things that we developed about the town center and the needs, uh, starting with the twenty, um, eighteen, uh, art space survey. Um, and, uh, needs assessment and then looking at the Board of Trustees Special Session last year, uh, the UDC. And, um, um, what was the other one? There's, there's one other document we were looking at there, blanking at the moment. Um, but we, we kind of compiled all those and sort of got that as a basis. And then we kind of sat in the room and sort of started to think about how we can reach all the community member, members. And we also looked at a timeline to do so and, and how we need to get going on it. And so the, the graphic you see today is sort of a lot of brainstorming notes and, um, uh, other, other charts. And, and things consolidated down into one sort of visual graphic to understand our approach. Uh, in the middle, you'll see some of the purposes of outreach that we feel were important. And then on the top bar, you can kind of see that there's three major events that are in, in larger print. Uh, starting with a kickoff event, we're calling it. It is an ice cream social that we're planning to have on Fourth and Main. And we are just had first conversation with Eric Brennler today about that. Uh, so we're just kind of jumping right into it, but, um, uh, and then mid, 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 mid-cycle having, uh, a presence at the, our town, our table. And then of course, doing the shretz in September, um, number of other, um, other events are plugged in below there. That are, some of them are in draft, one is tonight, right, obviously. Um, but we, we, we still have some holes to fill in that. And then on the bottom bar, you can kind of see that there's sort of, um, public update bulletins and website information and things. We want to get out there to make sure that people aren't in the dark about what we're doing and what our goals are. So what you see on, on, um, on the screen there is, uh, accurate except for the September fourteenth and twenty-eighth. Have been moved to thirteenth and twenty-seventh because of conflicts that were quickly identified in, uh, our, our presentation last week with Lauren. And at that, um, I'd love to talk more about the ice cream social in that first event and what we're planning to do there and hear feedback. It, it really is just starting to plan out. But before I do that, I think let's talk about what the end is all about.
Yeah, we're, um, you know, we know that the town of Carbondale is very diverse and there's a lot of sub-communities within the community. So the reason for all these different touches to the community that are noted on the outreach plan is to make sure we get to all of those different communities. So we really do, um, by doing this multiple times in different places, make sure that we get in front of. And get feedback and input and start to really generate energy from all the different parts of the Carbondale community. And the, the intent of all the outreach is both to let people know that we're really starting. I think we talked to somebody today at a store and they're, they're like, oh, you're working on the project that started twenty years ago and really hasn't gone anywhere. And yeah, so we're, we're here to say, yeah, we're really going somewhere this time and we really want you guys to come along. And it's not just going to be another kind of empty promise, but we're going to make things happen, right? So the outreach is to get everybody together, get everybody thinking about it, get everybody excited about it. And really, it's a lead in to a couple of shretts that happen in September. Which are intended to serve as the kickoff for the design of the project, really. We, we want to design the project with the community, um, and have the community participate in a really significant and meaningful way. And all of these events that bring, that kind of lead us up to that are identifying stakeholders to come and take part. Letting people know about the process so that if they want to take part, how they can do so. And it, as I said, it leads into these couple of events, the shretts, which are really highly participative. Kind of interactive events for people to come and be part of creating, you know, that first iteration of the plan. So, um, we're, we're headed towards that. The shretts themselves will be probably day-long affairs. And thanks to Heather, we've, we've added the, that we wanted to have a community open house at the end of each day of the shret. Which means that the shret can't just be about doodling and then going and having a beer and going home. It's that we have to draw something and, and kind of meaningfully coalesce it into something that communicates what we've talked about. And what the community wants and be prepared to present that to the, to the broader community in the evening.
Yep. So that, that's the game plan. Um, and, uh, we, we call the, you know, the ice cream social and the shretts kind of the bookends of this, uh, this plan. Of public outreach and pre-designed process and programming. So, uh, and everything else that fills in there is meant basically to, you know, fill a, a, a noted sort of gap in, in. Prior outreaches or areas we think might need to be strengthened. Um, and so really, we'd just like to hear your feedback on this. Um, I will go ahead and let you know that our plan for the ice cream social. Is on August second, which isn't that far away, obviously, the week after Mountain Fair. And we are going to try to have it as part of the farmer's market, talked to Eric Brennler today. And did hear back from Jamie Wall on that and it seems like the, um, the market's very full. And of course it is, and that's a good thing. And we're kind of coming in a little late to get involved in that. However, the. Uh, and this is just a sketch idea, um, Eric and I kind of brainstormed the idea of having it below the, 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 the rusty wave on Fourth and Main. Right there is a, is a viable spot to sort of host this event and other details are starting to mature along. Um, but the idea there is that it's, um, it would be from, um, from ten AM to three PM. And then five to seven PM would be, uh, a second event to allow for, for the commuter community to participate if they wanted to.
Great. Questions, thoughts? Sounds like specific to that event or generally?
Well, maybe you answered part of my question because sounded like a lot of these were going to be daytime events. And we have a large commuter population that have difficulty being here during the daytime. So apparently you're recognizing that with two ice cream socials, not one. Uh, one of which will not be competing with Jerry's ISIS, which is right there.
Whi- which is, we talked about that today and, uh, I haven't heard response from, from him, but we're, we're hoping to not be in competition.
And he's very community oriented. So I think you'll find him receptive.
We don't, we don't want to do that.
Yeah. I see you have a question mark underneath our town on table. You have. Latin event, senior living community.
So.
Youth community. So is this just an open question mark?
Uh, it's just a draft document and we had the, the Mexican rodeo in there and we realized it moved to rifle, I believe. And so it, it got, uh, X from the events on that date and now it's a placeholder to make. And so it it got uh X from the events on that date and now it's a placeholder to make sure we don't lose those categories of of things to. Kind of implement at some point along the way.
Okay, but I mean, the youth community is not overly large in town, but they. Should be recognized, the seniors should be recognized, and of course, the Latino community. Representing close to forty percent of our population needs to be recognized.
Absolutely.
Other thoughts? I mean, what does an ice cream social look like? Like I under the wave in the middle of the day during the.
It's free ice cream, man.
Is it ice, is it a table and you have ice cream in chat or is it a sit down like we're going to do a shirt?
The last time there was an ice cream social was last summer on this topic and and the town hosted and it was very successful and that was the other document, I forgot to mention. Saying before that we we looked at, right, uh and really gained a lot of insight from about what the town town center should be. Um what it actually is is uh you know, so last week on Tuesday, we presented this this plan that we prepared the week before. And sort of out of draft document to something presentable to uh Andrew Michelson and his team, they they loved it and we presented to Lauren. On Thursday and then she quickly got us uh booked into this meeting today. Uh so we're we're running really quick to kind of get this thing started and the details of that ice cream social um is going to be or not finalized. But we're starting, we're we're realizing that with that one specifically, we really just need to jump into action to get it going. Um and I mean, that said, I mean, there we we do have a a working document going about. Getting into the sopra sun and Katie and Kay um getting uh an easy up out there, having tables um. Either partnering with Jeffries or procuring ice cream and figuring out a means to get it to people and not making it mandatory to give us a. Uh an email address and we get an ice cream cone, but encouraging involvement and participation, but not making that as a a string attached. Item, so there's just the ideas are out there and we're mobilizing, um but I can't share the the intimate details today.
I was just curious what it would look like.
Sure.
Great description.
Yeah, i- if I could jump in quickly, um. One thing that we do want to make part of all of this outreach in particular, the the ice cream social being our kickoff. Is is a little bit of just, you know, the get to know, you know, who is art space and and who is our team and what are we doing? I think a lot of folks have heard art space, um the word, they've heard art space is coming to town and is doing things, but they don't know me. They don't know the work you've done. Um so I want to make sure there's an opportunity to get introduced uh to us quite literally and to introduce the team of of JV and Ramsey. As as well as, you know, Andy and Heather and the rest of their team, because we're going to be in the community and I'm frankly relying quite a bit. Partners on their teams to to help facilitate a lot of these these touches and. We thought a really good practice would be to get out in front of it, to give a face to these names and to the efforts that we're doing. At the front side and build some of that familiarity and hopefully some rapport that will build into some of that participation we're going to be asking for. A little more distinctly in that shred setting in a few weeks' time.
Great, thanks. It and if I could add one thing that. You know, the purpose is Ramsey kind of just went through it rather quickly, but they're kind of like, why are we doing each of these things and? You know, i- item number two on the left-hand side, it says, you know, announce, spread goodwill, provide information and. The next word is vibe, right? One of the things we've talked about as a project team is. It's really important to find the vibe of Carbondale and find what makes Carbondale tick because that's really what we want to see. Get embedded in the design of town center, right? We want the town center to keep Carbondale, Carbondale. And w- we've. Plans are still coming together, but we kind of jokingly at first and maybe it really happens, we talked about. People get ice cream and they, we want them to make their most Carbondale ice cream cone, whatever that is, right? And. Maybe they s- take a quick photo of it and scan a QR code and send it to us and we we make something out of that, it becomes a piece of art, right? So. We're thinking that it's not just that we stand in front of people and say, this is, you know, here's a project, it's like, hey. We want people to take part, so take part on lots of different levels, you might come to the shred or you might just help us, you know. Give us some fun and funky idea about what really about what the vibe of Carbondale is and how we really, you know, tap into that for this project, so. Lots of different layers, different things we're considering and we'll see how they all come out. Great. Other thoughts?
So up until we get to the September fourteenth sharette, we're sort of, we're still just staying in the sort of program conceptual realm. And there's no sort of form-based discussions at that point, basically, or what is your thoughts around that?
Yeah, I I think we're we're trying to not jump into design until after we've come to the shretts. Um there there does need to be some sort of pro forma work done on art spaces and to know what um. You know, what what commercial opportunities might exist there, but beyond that, there wouldn't be any interest in in taking anything further.
Okay.
Want to start to design up and make a real program so that when we sit down. At a sharette as an event to start to design something, we we kind of know what what can work financially, that what we don't want the sharette to be. Is something that is totally, you know, pie in the sky and that can't be realized, right? We're, so we want to, we want to look at. As we lead up to that, what the program can be that's gonna, that Andrew and the team at Art Space believe is a viable. Um project scope and program and then those things begin to inform and then those, that becomes the starting point for the shret.
Okay.
And we're not starting from scratch, as you said, I mean, we did a fair amount of outreach last summer, so hopefully this doesn't feel redundant of that and it feels like you're building on that. And like.
And that's important to me personally and and I think JV as well and are in art space is that there's there's a ton of information already out there. And part of part of this first meeting is to identify. Who wants to be involved, how are you going to be involved and also let people know that there's a, there's a a very good amount of information already available.
Yeah.
And we want that to be shared uh in whatever portal um i- you know, we're we're going to use and I think we're, we've just on that topic, we've talked about using the website. Um uh. Uh for art space and link into the town website and back and forth and airing information for that, so.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's, we've also got a lot of constraints or or. There's a lot of things that are predefined out of the UDC, right, for this zone district, so there's a lot that we know, it's it's really not a clean slate call.
Yeah, well, that was my, it seems like a long time ago, we got a lot of information and then we went silent. For a while, so it's really great to see uh a process laid out like this, so thank you for doing that and I'm sure we're going to learn a lot about. What we need to do in addition to this, um could you speak a little bit about, you you mentioned the shret, but you also have here a design advisory group? Could you speak a little bit about what that group does and is that you or is that the larger community and what's the role of that group?
What the? Sure, I I think the the exact functions of the design advisor group are not quite identified yet.
Okay.
Um but we do want to know who would want to be involved in in design and also solicit feedback on. What sort of groupings are important to make sure are plugged into a group that gets together where we do a brainstorm in a smaller table room? That um we can hold throughout the project as, you know, checking in with different interest groups and different agenda items that surface as the most important goals of the project. To make sure that those aren't being lost and that expertise is made available uh to our team.
Great.
Yeah, and I I I would add to that, um in in other communities where we've we've done uh similar approaches on. Very well-known centralized sites that are going to be developed and changed. Um getting input from the community, not just on, you know, you know, how much housing or how much commercial, but what form that takes. You know, i- i- you go a lot in different directions, but having a stakeholder group or a designer advisory group, whatever name you want to give it. Of identified stakeholders can carry forward um throughout this process and provide that. Consistent touch point for us before we, you know, you can, we can't go broadly to the community with every little design iteration, but having. Having a group that can help to check in with sort of the pulse of the community, not necessarily decision-making, but at least help us. You know, check on where we're we're going is really helpful uh before we're we're bringing things forward and any sort of more broad or. You know, certainly approvals and process, things like that, it helps to just kind of. Have identified folks with that voice to um bring that to our process.
Great, thanks. Yeah, Chris.
I think the the, you know, I think is, I I think this is great. To, yeah, focus on the the, you know, try to try to think about the programming, I'm not. Super sure we're going to like come up with anything surprising that we haven't sort of hasn't been floated. In somewhere or another, but I just would offer a warning that I think once plans crystallize into something more. You know, concrete, then you are going to see people be much more, then they have much more of something to criticize. Um and so I do think the pro, of course, the process doesn't end with this, with at the end of this, but um I do think. You know, trying to. Um. Be mindful of that, I guess, um because I think, you know, Bus Salt obviously is going through quite a bit of a issue right now that with their downtown thing. Where people are coming in on the back end of the design and offering a whole lot of criticism. When there was a exten- ostensibly along our outreach process, but it may have been more conceptual rather than concrete. Um and people didn't necessarily have specific things to criticize in it or or. You know, criticize makes it sound awful, but uh you know, con- contribute to it, I guess, hopefully.
You know. Yeah, if we could add one, one other thing to that is that one. This outreach plan gets us to sometime in the autumn, but outreach doesn't stop. Once the sharette happens.
Yeah.
That's just phase one, right? And it continues and part of the design advisory group. Is to build a set of advocates in the community for the project, right? Because when you, when you are. Part of the process all the way through and you understand the decisions that have been made and why they were made and how the design evolved. You get to the end and you go, it makes sense, the person who doesn't take part in that and sees the end result goes, well. Why the heck is it like that? Why is it like this, right? And so that's the intent is to have that group of people. That becomes an important connection between the project design and the community to say, uh no, 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 no. Look, we know why this was done and this is why and this is the way it should be and yeah, so it's all kind of integrated. Uh thi- this is an unusual project for me in that this is one where everyone in the town is really excited about the project. When I come in on as an affordable housing architect and lots of communities, what I met with is, we don't want that, right? We don't want that in my neighborhood and so we intentionally work very hard to build supporters and advocates. Um I think it's actually going to be kind of easy here compared to what we're used to, but I I think we've got the I. A plan in place, yeah, well, yeah, that's right, thank you. I think we've got a plan in place to really get to the end and and hopefully have a good outcome that the community supports what we've come up with.
Mm-hmm. And and then I think just adding to that, I think also just sort of keeping in mind the idea that the. That this project is never finished, it's a, it's going to, the ideal thing is it's a living, breathing part of our town and it's something that will be. Is able to be. You know, adapt and be a valuable building to our town for a hundred years or. Buildings for a hundred years or more, um and that we try to keep that in mind of like. That there is like room in the future for continued creative input into this project and um. And ability for the project to kind of be a that generator of of community. You know, synergy basically or whatever, see if I can use all the buzzwords.
Chris, any other questions or comments from the board and I'll see if anybody out here has anything?
I have one comment.
Yeah.
Um this process sounds very familiar, it's very similar to the Crystal River Wild and Scenic process, it started out with an ice cream social last fall. And. I think one of the most valuable uh components that you'll recognize is that it'll give you um an opportunity to. Identify some of the um objections throughout this so that you can diffuse them as the uh process moves along via your. Design committee or um other, you know, resources. Um one of the important things that uh this other process has found is that it's um. Key to have a a larger public uh presentation at least once. Uh during this process so that people don't feel like it's being confined. Um to just a a small subgroup, uh so you might consider uh something like that along the way as well at an appropriate interval. Um but yeah, I mean, I I agree with the approach and it seems to be a very successful or effective in other um. Initiatives, so um good, thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to add any thoughts on this plan? Okay, um you know, we always, our community that we struggle the most to engage with on stuff like this is our Latino community, so I think just continuing to. Commit to that, um. Uh I think some of these events aren't, th- these are great community events, but that part of our community is often not well represented at them, even things like our town one table. Um so I think that that's, I don't have the answer for you, but um you know, seeking out. Advice from people as you go about where we can interact most meaningfully with that part of our community, um I think is really essential. Okay, anything else from the group? Okay, Andrew?
No, uh thanks again for uh giving us the opportunity to provide the update and uh we'll see that. All the comments from from the folks in the room about and and reaching on being thoughtful about reaching. Latino community is something we've heard every time we've been in Carbondale and it's something that we're we're committed to doing. And I think identifying those touches outside of what is known to us. Is going to be a huge part of what we're doing now is is finding where those other opportunities may exist that we might not even be aware of. And and not ask the folks to come to us, but finding ways to also go to them. Um and we're going to try and do that as much as we can and 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 I think as JV said, the process doesn't end in September. This is something that will be ongoing uh as other designs, so. You have my word that that's something that we're we're hearing loud and clear. And just thanks again for having seen.
Great, thanks, everybody. Thanks.
All right, thank you, take care.
Thank you. Move on to our last item on the agenda and I think some of the same people will will be involved in this discussion, um JV, you can choose to sit there, sit your way, whatever you want to do. We'll um, right, okay. We'll just kind of see how this discussion goes, so um this one, uh Lauren can probably give us some context on sort of how this. Came up and and I can help frame it as well, so Lauren, why don't you give us a little context on what we're needing?
Much of the um. The uh confusion and need for clarity on this, I will admit. Stems from my um recent stint as acting building official for the town of Carbondale. Um so um I've really been discovering um. A lot about the impact of the town's policies with regard to um solar requirements and. New energy codes and some of the things that we've been talking with with Clear. Um and of course, I don't have the benefit of being here when some of those things were um. Were legislated in, I think the R E B P was twenty twenty, um that ordinance. Um so, but when we come into some of these multifamily and mixed-use. Um. Developments, which we've had quite a few of, it just even since I've gotten here, um. All of them have been dealing with particularly the solar requirements um in a. In different ways and the questions that have come up and the problems that we have been encountering. Get repeated over and over again, um I mean, at the base, the um. Our process with regard to solar on multifamily and multi-use buildings is fairly ponderous. It's ponderous even with single-family residential just because of um Excel's process. And their interconnect agreement and how long it takes and the coordination between the solar companies and the developers. Um and the contractors and the the um the electric company itself. So what has come up recently, um some of the things that have come up is are. The intersection between putting solar on the roof of a multifamily building. Um but making a decision either to or not to individually meter. The solar so that the end user gets the benefit of that solar. It's come up in a number of ways, one with questions about what the board's um underlying intent was, was it simply to. As uh the R E B P ordinance says, promote a local self-sufficient energy economy? Or was there anything about? The fact that um at least at this point, electric, um all-electric is more expensive than a mixture of gas. And electric for an end user, especially in an affordable unit and um. And and how does the town? What's the town's interest and or priority with regard to that? Um in addition, Excel has this rule called the two hundred percent rule where if you have. What we require for solar on the top of a large multifamily building. What we require for solar on the top of a large multifamily building. But it's not individually metered. The only thing that XL is looking at with regard to demand for energy is things like hallways and outside lights. And everything else, but the amount of solar that we we're requiring um generates more than two hundred percent of what XL sees as the use. And so they reject the application, sometimes multiple times. The um, the other thing that we're running into is that we have a requirement. For our residential and our multifamily and mixed-use commercial. Um, to not give a temporary certificate of occupancy until we have the hers. And the R E B P and the solar has been approved and is installed and has and is operating. Except that right now we have an entire file drawer full of TCOs that have been issued without that. That are waiting for that because otherwise we are really stopping the um. The uh market housing economy in Carbondale. And some of these places would be waiting months with a house that all it was waiting for was solar and people are losing their interest rates on their loans. And and what have you. So what, uh, those are all, they're not all problems. But they're complications of the process and they're some of the things that are making it ponderous and having it have some lack of clarity. For the developers and the contractors who are coming in and trying to put these properties and these projects together. Most recently, it has come up with questions with the Meadowwood uh teacher housing project. Um, which is one reason why I'm really glad that um Jeff Dickinson and Bob Schultz and JV are here. Um, as well as Jared, barely see him here. Um, to to kind of be able to discuss it from multiple perspectives. Um, so that we can make some decisions about. Uh, you know, what our policies are and some of it's, some of it's written and some of it isn't. With regard to whether or not, for example, the school district could put the. Solar that's required on one of their other buildings and have it not be connected to this particular housing development. So um, I didn't want to make a bigger deal out of it than it was. But I'm kind of looking for some clarity for the staff so that we can provide clarity to the, to the contractors and the developers. About um, you know, how to make this easier um without jeopardizing our priorities. With regard to um, you know, alternative energies and um, working towards uh net zero.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Questions for Lauren from that? I can provide a little bit more and then we can get into the discussion.
So you have this uh thing with the always and the individual. So there's a the additional cost if you're gonna try to break it out for each apartment.
It's quite expensive. Um, I believe that for this particular project. Um, it's upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in that metering. Um, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're, you're very close. It's, there's a a hundred and forty thousand dollar ad to take the array. And distribute it across to all fifty units.
Cause you have to meter, you're already, each unit is getting a meter anyway, I assume, right?
An electric meter.
And then, but then you're having to build meters on the other end of it or?
Yeah, then every unit has a production meter and every unit has um. We take us, we take the solar array and it gets divided up into fifty little pieces. And one of the critical elements for affordable housing is we try to make them affordable. And keep them efficient by making them as small as possible, right? And the the town's um R E B P requirement is one watt per square foot. And so when we we get down to a unit that is six hundred square feet or seven hundred and fifty square feet. It's two panels. And what we are doing effectively is taking two panels in order, if we, if we have to distribute amongst all fifty units. Those two panels come with one inverter and one production meter and a series of disconnect switches. And routing for electrical and we essentially. Make some very inefficient little systems. Because our units are so small. Um, and we spend a lot of money that doesn't go into what I think the intent was. And I I may have been the person that I I specifically said to Lauren, what is the intent? We were trying to figure that out. Because if the intent is to really build a more resilient grid for the town and to have as much renewable energy as possible. Why would we want to spend an extra hundred and forty thousand dollars spreading it out amongst fifty units? When it doesn't really provide any meaningful additional energy generation capacity? And in fact, maybe is less resource efficient because we're actually putting resources on for all of these little separate systems. That we should not be spending that money and those resources should go to some other project instead.
And we're doing this to satisfy basically uh Excel requirement, which is trying to tie a specific. Panel to a specific. User or something. It it, I guess I'm wondering if there's not some simple method of, you know, accounting method essentially. That's not necessarily tied to hardware where, you know, you have your square footage and you can, you can measure your energy use. But the production is just divided by the units without being specifically.
I I don't know how Excel does their calculation for that.
No one does.
Uh, Jeff might.
Let's, I I think there's a lot of questions. Let me just, um, these are, this is really good starting point. So I think we kind of have two questions to to give staff direction on and I'll start by saying also, obviously, I'm in this strange position. Where I'm working on the project um that we're talking about uh as staff of the school district and here I am as mayor. I've recused myself from all these discussions so far. Um, I'm gonna stay involved in this one because we're talking not just about this. We're sort of using this as a case study that's going through the process and how it's impacting it. And whatever we, whatever direction we give will not be specific to this project. It'll be for any project that meets whatever criteria. So unless anybody has a concern, I'm gonna um stay involved in that discussion. Um, so I think our big questions to kind of end up giving uh some direction on are a um. Our intent with the multifamily specifically um onsite solar requirement. Is it just to add some solar to the, to the grid and make the grid more renewable? And therefore, it doesn't matter if it's individually meeting metered. Or was it to give that benefit of that renewable energy directly to each tenant in that building? Uh, in which case it would be uh require the individual metering and we can get more into the details about the individual metering. And and Bob's here and Jeff's here and Riley's here and a lot of people, um, Jeff and Ramsey are still here. Jared's here to help us understand how these decisions impact things. Um, and then I think we may want to also have a a separate discussion at the end about. Um, for projects like Meadowwood where it's a hundred percent um de-restricted affordable housing. And it's a hundred percent electric with no gas line and it's to an energy code that's more advanced than ours. Would we consider any waiver of this requirement? Like, is this the most important requirement? Or are those other things more important as we were discussing earlier where you go to efficiency, then you go to electrification? And then finally you go to to solar, acknowledging the cost and and complexity that it adds. So let's start by focusing on the question of kind of the intent and and the issue of spreading it out and individually metering versus um. Allowing some flexibility at the staff level to say, okay, you can put that wherever you want as long as you meet that criterion. Marty and then Erica.
Okay, um, how did this play out on the fifty units of Third Street?
At Third Street because it technically it is, they are teacherages, they're owned by the district. There, it's not governed by the state. This one specific project at Meadowwood is unique. In that Third Street was reviewed and approved by the the state and did not come through the town's. Energy or plan review process. It, we did bring it through the town's entitlement process. It was really done as a courtesy. And as a. A a show of good faith and wanting to be part of the community and, you know, work with the U D C and meet all of those criteria. This specific project at Meadowwood. Is coming through the town because someone with incredible foresight. Twenty-three years ago wrote into the annexation agreement that if. I, what I think Bob knows, I think it's Lot Two of the North Face um annexation. If it were used as teacher housing at any point in the future, that it would have to go through both. The state's approval processes and the town's full approval.
So this did have to go through the state approval process?
Uh, we've actually spent a number of months with Lauren working out that the town is, has signed a, an M O U. To allow the town to act on the state's behalf in this project.
Thank you for clarifying that.
One further point of clarification, we passed this in January of twenty twenty and the Third Street project, which is twenty units, I think, was finished in twenty sixteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Okay, so it's a pretty new, I think this is the first big affordable housing projects that we've had go through this. I thought it was the first project at all, but it sounds like the ones like. Bristol's projects near City Market are subject to this, but are you saying that they got temporary certificates of occupancy without the solar yet? Were they one of those?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think Bristol's did, but a lot, a lot of individual projects. Um, we've been making exceptions for, but particularly a lot of single-family homes that just cannot get it done in time.
Okay, Erica.
Um, so Lauren, I really appreciate you. Um, I think sometimes it takes, we have to step back and look at policies that we've implemented. Cause I would say, I mean, what I recall is really our intent was to just try and get more solar on all of our buildings. Multifamily buildings tend to be larger. We, we look at them as like a large rooftop. Let's get solar on that. Um, but I do, I recall um when I was at Clear, us working with uh JV. Trying to figure out how we could get solar and Jeff Gatlin at the school district on the Third Street apartments. And really it did come down to this sub-metering issue. Um, and I think, you know, if you were to simplify it and be like, well, solar's the priority, so let's just do a master meter. And then just charge people energy use by square foot. What happens is you lose that um really strong behavior pull. When people have to pay their own energy bills, they tend to use a lot less energy. And that's been proven time and time again, over and over. Like you look at any sort of dorm usage. And I mean, I won't make comments about who's living in the dorms, but like generally those are on a master meter and they're just off the charts. And energy use goes, you know, by per square foot is way higher than an apartment of similar aged people. Um, suddenly paying their own utility bills. So I think we wouldn't wanna. Make that shift and lose that important kind of trigger to help people continue to save energy. Cause the school district wants and other uh owners probably want their homeowners to be able to afford their utility bills. And not have to like suddenly strap them because they've got a bunch of energy wasters in there. Um, so the problem's been, we've known of this issue and the increased cost ahead of time, uh, or at least from past projects. And I was wondering how it was working out if people knew um from the get-go that they had to do this. So I think um, I personally, I don't feel like our intent is to add additional costs. And if it's a hundred and forty dollars addition, I would rather see that go into either more efficiency or more. All-electric, you know, technology or whatever that might be. Um, and so, but I think it's good to, to work through this. Um, but I just wanted to add those clarifications from what I uh know.
Thanks, Erica. Other thoughts? I want to make sure if there's anybody else here who wants to comment on this topic before we might give some direction. Colin?
Yeah, I don't think I fully understand this, but um each unit will be metered for electricity use.
Yes, that is correct.
What we're talking about is adding another meter that would kind of manage the solar.
Yeah.
Into their unit. So they would still have to pay if they jacked up their heat.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
They wouldn't see necessarily the offset if it's a sunny day. But the school district owns the property, right? So you're basically getting that larger benefit and transferring it to everybody in their units.
That, that is correct.
In rights.
Right, and I, I don't think that the. The, the question at hand, uh, lo- I think Lauren framed it quite well, but the um. What we've, what we've talked about in terms of the one hundred and forty thousand dollars is just really, you know. We presented to the school district that we could master meter it.
Yeah.
Right? And then all of that array can go on one meter, which is very efficient. And it would save us that amount of money. But then what happens is it becomes incumbent upon the school district to have the accountability. That Erica is talking about, the school district then has to read the sub-meter, figure out what each a tenant has used. And then the school district has to become the utility company and bill the tenant. And. When Jeff Gatlin was here a few months ago and we talked about that possibility. Jeff said that there is one property that the school district does have in Glenwood where they do that and they have found that to be. Extremely troublesome and they want to focus on. Teaching children and not being a utility company and trying to bill tenants. And so they were like, the, the last thing they were, the last thing they wanted to do is have to track fifty units worth of energy usage. For all their different teachers and then assign an energy consumption to that and an amount and send those bills out and collect that money. And they're like, no, that's, we want to try and avoid that. And that's, so the, to not do that then is to again distribute all, either distribute all of the. Solar assets across all fifty units, so it becomes built into the system. Or to displace that energy generation equipment someplace else onto some other building that the district may own. And generate the electricity renewably that the community would like and that. I mean, let's face it, uh, everything that the community is trying to do is spot on, right? All we have to do is look at what's happening around the world with weather and disasters that are happening in virtually every corner. To say that what the town's goals and intents are, are right on and everybody needs to do that. Um, the challenge here is really one of. I'm a housing advocate first and I'm an energy and sustainability advocate second. And how, where do we draw the line for priority? And for me, I want to make sure we get every unit built that we can get built and how we spend that money. And how it goes into building housing and getting people living close to where they work is extremely important to me. Perhaps more important than where us, a renewable energy array goes. Um, so th- that's kind of the complexity of this, that we are trying to get as many units built. To put as many teachers into the community as possible as close to where they work. And then we are trying to work out, how do we put? Does the money go into housing or does the money go into renewable energy? And because we have a certain amount of money, we have a budget for the project and how do we allocate it? And that's where really where we're here, asking the questions of Lauren.
Yeah. Seems um. In a more free market approach, like it's affordable housing units, it makes a lot of sense to have these meters. But when it's a rental project, it's owned by one entity, it just doesn't seem to make, seems a lot of extra money. When if they're willing to put it on some other building and it goes into the grid, didn't we achieve our goal?
Is it twenty eight hundred dollars?
The, the difference, the, the. Yeah, exactly. It's, the base cost is, is forty five hundred dollars per unit for the.
No, I mean, just the solar number you said is adding to the cost.
Correct, the, yeah, the base cost for the solar for the fifty wa- kilowatts, Jeff, is about forty five hundred per unit. Right about four bucks a watt. And then the, the differential for the build out and the distribution across the, the, the fifty units is. Twenty eight hundred dollars per unit brings the total up to about seven thousand three hundred dollars per unit.
To add solar that's individually metered. Which is a, what's your total there for all fifty units added up?
Uh, it's, it's the base, the base cost of the system was two twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand and three hundred and sixty-five thousand for the distribution.
Okay.
Sorry, can I just ask um JV one question about, not necessarily about individually metering. But about whether or not there is a difference, um, a significant difference between putting. but about whether or not there is a difference, um, a significant difference between putting solar with a master meter on these three buildings or putting what the town would require would be a hundred and fifty percent of what would go on that building on a different building.
It's almost a wash. It's pretty close, right?
So wouldn't, wouldn't really matter which one you did from a financial perspective.
Correct.
So we have an alternative compliance that's a hundred and fifty percent of your doing it offsite.
And as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong Jared, um, there is something written that the priority is that that offsite still be within the eight one six two three zip code.
Marty. Okay, so that raises a second question. If you did do it offsite, the school district is not just in the eight one six two three zip code. Would the offsite be in the eight one six two three zip code or don't we know?
We don't know at the moment, but I know that the school district has a couple of big roofs that are within a few hundred yards of the, the project site.
Um, actually, I was thinking about something you said, and this may not answer our total question or your total question. But in a case where it'd be say forty percent or more affordable housing, why wouldn't we make it open for an exception, you know, an exception for this? Uh, driving things affordable housing. And uh, this is not just saying, saying going at your project. When someone else comes along, and forty percent is an arbitrary number. I'm just saying more than our twenty percent that we have existing. Say thirty percent, say a third affordable housing, that the board would consider an exception.
Yeah, I think that's our second question is to get into that. So let's, let's come back to that. Um. Jared, did you have something? You just joined us and then Jeff Dickinson does as well. Jeff, you can come up and sit if you want to.
So I, you know, I, where Lauren kinda started with the question was more general applicability and I know we kind of got into the weeds with a single project that has some unique characteristics to it. Um, you know, just to kind of take a, a step back from this one project and kind of look at a few other projects. Um, I think the reason we're, we're trying to understand the intent of the regulation a little bit more is how offsite mitigation um is achieved can create some additional complexities. Um, you know, in this one example, there's joint ownership currently between the development and where the intended um offsite mitigation is, but that may not always be the case. And if that property is then sold in some fashion to some other entity, whether it's managing it or um, you know, individual units are sold and, and turned into, you know, for sale affordable units. Then you have that additional complexity of now the solar generation, which was intended for this building is no longer tied to that property or that building, or you have to create uh some complex agreements to to, to tie that back. Um, in other properties around town where multi-family housing has been constructed, there's similar types of um potentials with how land has been subdivided where there's a potential for a parcel to be sold off to a different entity. And so if the solar generation isn't on that building, there's a threat that the um tenants of that unit will never realize the solar benefits, right? They'll never realize that reduced energy cost. And so just trying to keep that in mind as we consider this and not just this one isolated uh situation, but, but kind of how it could be applicable townwide.
Great, thanks Jared. Jeff?
Thanks, I just wanted to give some the context of why we have this. So when we adopted these, the uh residential efficient building program back in oh eight, I think, might have been the first year. We've had it basically a similar program for years. What we were seeing, and this was brought forth by John Plano, the building official. We were having all these big multi-family projects going in without any solar and everybody else had to do it. And was like, oh, there's a loophole. So what we did was with the trustees at the time, got creative and tried to figure out a way to catch that loophole. And the decision was instead of requiring three watts per square foot, which is the kind of the average, we said, well, it's gonna be basically affordable housing, let's only do one watt per square foot. So that was, that was kind of the thinking, the process there. So we reduced the amount of of it. And we also took, and then this is something that we worked on with the spreadsheet recently that you didn't have to have such a high number because you divide by the total number of units. It's, what is it, forty-four thousand? Square feet, the total project?
Yeah.
Divided by fifty units puts you under a thousand square feet per unit. So that's where that one watt per square foot number kicks in. Um, I've also, I mean, when I've done these projects where you've had solar, like on a house, you only had to have one meter. So I don't know why that's, that, why they're making it be that way. So we'll have to follow up on that.
I'll have to follow up with Excel. I do know that when, when we've done arrays on um other larger multi-family projects, there is that there is both a, you know, a revenue meter for Excel and then there's a production meter as well.
Right.
And you know, it's the, the offset of those two, you know, Excel or the energy provider will track both of those meter readings, right?
It can, it can be done with one net meter also. And the other thing I just wanted you to know about is Joni Matranga and Mona Newton, both formerly of Core. They are meeting with the Colorado Energy Office next week to discuss this very issue. To try to, how do we deal with this problem? It's real. So this is not unique. I mean, if we can help create some legislation through the PUC with the CEO and uh Colorado Solar Energy Industry Association as our partners, now there could be something coming. It's not gonna be right away, but you know, I, I, I think we can do more research to help answer this. It was just really brought to my attention fairly recently, so. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend making a decision right now. You know, I think they need, you know, the per, first goal is to get the building permit issued, right? To get the project going, but that's kind of a separate thing. But you know, let's, let's get this solved right and just not make a one-off decision.
Well, if I could just, yeah, the building permit is item number one, one, one. And then but in today's world, I have to allow the contractor to order the electric gear now in order to have it next year at this, almost this time. And that electric gear is determined by how much solar goes on this building and some of the complexities of the incoming gear set up with the power feed in and the, the renewable energy coming in on the backside. So I don't, actually, we don't have a big window of time to wait. Um, the contractor is pressing me every day to say I, I need the gear submittal, I need the gear submittal. It's a, you know, three hundred and forty day or three hundred and twenty day lead time item. And so I, we, the school district can't wait six months to make the decision. We might be able to wait a couple of weeks. So if we can act and make a decision within that timeline, sure, that, that would be great.
Okay, Chris did you have?
So if I understand you, Jeff correctly, yeah, that's sort of my thought when I was talking at the beginning is like if you can assign, you know, just, just uh, you know, actuarially, the panel to an apartment. Um, it's, it's merely, we're merely trying to get through this weed of, the weeds of this, of this Excel policy. It's not a, there's no actual there's no actual physical need for this beyond the accounting aspect of it, right? Because if you, you know, you need to know your usage obviously, but if you're just, if you, if you've assigned the panels at the beginning to the, to the specific apartment or whatever, and they basically get that baseline chunked out of their usage, the net metering, I don't, I, I don't know why you need to meter the production of each one necessarily, if you can just divide your overall system by whatever percentage your apartment consists of that system. And I don't know how people do it in solar farms. Do they do this and you know, there's these community, community solar things, do they individually production meter each thing or do they just meter it and then they just mathematically figure out what the, what the you know, what the production is per person or whatever. I mean, I would be inclined, yeah, I think it's absurd to make them invest all this money in these meters just for a bureaucratic or reason of some sort. But I do think from an intent perspective, I do think there is an affordability aspect to this question, which is, you know, we, if we're pushing people into more electric usage and stuff that is pushing up their energy bills on that side. And so if we're trying to make affordable housing, part of that cost burden for people is their energy use, energy bill. And I do think for me at least, an intent of the policy would be to, and especially in an affordable housing context, is to try to pass some of that benefit of the solar onto the tenants so that they're not paying a higher, so they're, you know, hopefully their energy costs are not going up with increased electrification.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Erica?
So I think um for a couple of clarifications, when you buy into a community solar array, you get a bill credit on your bill. So you're buying in just like the school district has done, just like the town has done, you know, buy in a certain KW capacity of that larger array. And then every month you get an offset on your bill. And what Excel's not gonna let the school district do is provide that as like a bill credit for the extra that they're producing on their meter for the lights in the hallway and the parking lot and then distribute that. So it wouldn't be benefiting uh the way Excel has their system set up, which is where changes at the PUC would be helpful. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be benefiting the homeowners. Um, without it being complicated by the school district kind of dividing up those monies and sending everybody a check kind of thing. So just, so part of the issue is that we don't have a um, kind of utility structure set up. I mean, that is the main issue that we're dealing with is that we don't own that utility. So we can't make that change ourselves. Um, and then it sounds like timing is an issue. I think the other part, we are talking about offsite um opportunities. And Excel Energy does have a low income community solar option that um those, if you are, pay your utility bill, you can subscribe to that program and it will offset your full bill. And every community solar array, at least five percent of that bill has to be allocated for low income subscribers. Um, and I don't know if the school employees would um qualify theoretically, maybe half of them would or something. So we could, not necessarily, I wouldn't wanna put that burden on our staff to like collect that data from the school district, but the school district could certainly encourage those tenants to sign up for Excel's low income community offset. And then there we achieve some of our goals where we're offsetting and it would probably be higher than the percentage we require in our code. And people would be achieving savings, cause they can apply to offset a hundred percent of their bill. Um, so it's a, a worthwhile program to pursue um for folks who are paying their utility bills. Um, and then I guess I would, um, I would be open to uh considering a waiver in this case and maybe then coming up with some guidelines for a waiver while we also do more work with Jeff to figure out how we uh, what our solution is moving forward for other projects. Um, but I think my other comment that I wanna make um, regarding this particular building and this uh property owner is they literally own the largest onsite array right next door. Um, they don't own it, but uh if they have the largest onsite array out of any other public building in our neighboring communities, you know, um, I won't, maybe our county. Um, I couldn't remember offhand, but it's three hundred and seventy-nine KW and I just think that maybe that's one of the criteria of the um waiver is that if you also own other large arrays on your facilities, we'll consider a waiver or something, but they're trying to do the right thing. Um, and they are on all their other buildings, it's just, this becomes complicated. So sorry, that was really long, but I had a lot I wanted to say.
Okay, so we're kinda getting into um that other question about potential waivers if, if other criteria are met. Maybe before we go deeper there, um Luis or Lonnie, any thoughts on this first question of um our intent? And whether it's about, you know, crediting each individual unit through uh, individual meters or whether, it's interesting though, cause I'm actually getting a little lost in the question myself now because we do have the offsite provision, which it seems like that's where we'll end up if if you, if you don't put it individually metered, you're gonna end up offsite. And then if it's at a hundred and fifty percent of the requirement, then it seems like it's kind of a wash. So I don't know that, that's giving uh this particular project a whole lot of direction, but um thoughts Lonnie or Luis?
Um, you know, just broad brush for me, my takeaway is that uh the intent is being satisfied with, you know, the um without doing all the additional metering. I mean, we're just satisfying our intent. It seems to me that the additional meter, metering is more to satisfy uh Excel's uh desire for uh data collection, which I'm not in favor of. So um, you know, I, I don't really wouldn't really support uh all the additional, the individual metering for, for that reason and others.
Okay, thanks Lonnie.
I mean, I'm on that same boat and I think Erica summarized it really well in terms of like, there, there's a lot of complexity and bureaucracy around Excel, so to simplify it, I, yeah, I would support that modification.
So it sounds like the board supports staff having discretion for now and working, I think, as Jeff said, going forward and as Jared looks at more and more projects, but for now to have some discretion to say, you don't have to individually meter to meet the, the requirement if it can be met in another way. Um, what about the other question of um, if a project meets certain criteria, I mean, these would have to be developed, but um an affordability threshold or other efficiency thresholds. Um, if it's all electric before we require that, um, if it's building to a higher energy code before we require that, those kinds of things. Um, if they own, you know, like have a lot of other renewable energy infrastructure offsite, something like that. Would we be open to some criteria for waivers? Cause I think staff right now is stuck in a situation where if an applicant says um, we'd like, you know, is there, is there any chance of a waiver? We have all these other good things in the project. Staff's kind of been stuck with, no, we don't really have a, a process for that. Marty?
Yeah, I think, excuse me, I think we should discuss that another time. We're not gonna resolve that tonight. And if we wanna give an exception for this one project to get that out of the way, but that doesn't solve the questions that you brought up, that staff needs clear direction on what our intent is and where we're going. But that's something I think we should have another meeting, get it on the agenda. And whether it's clarify the existing ordinance or pass a new ordinance to supersede it. If that requires more discussion.
Okay, Lauren?
Just for Marty, that we are having, going to be having some of those discussions with the adoption of the new energy code and some of the changes with the R A B C, R E, yeah, thank you. I, I do think that, and I think Jared would probably agree with me that we've heard, uh, I've gotten a little clarity about where the priorities were and, and um what the intent of the current regulation is. And with regard to um individually metering every unit. So then if it just comes down to, you know, local offsite versus onsite with a master meter, if assuming it can get through Excel's process. I think I have enough to get going on that without getting into the weeds about waivers. I think the waivers is a bit, much bigger question, um, particularly if it isn't a one hundred percent affordable housing project. Uh, because we have a lot of other projects going on around town, some of which are you know, their plans show them as net zero and they, would they rate a waiver of some of that because they plan to be net zero and even though they're commercial instead of housing. So I think that's probably a bigger conversation um over, over a larger period of time.
Yeah, but addressing this situation here, are you comfortable with wavering it? I mean, that's what I'm hearing from the rest of the board.
I don't know that I'm comfortable with a straight waiver, but um, but I think that we could probably if we have discretion, work something out that works for everybody.
Well, I think that's the direction the board's giving, right?
Okay, yeah. Other thoughts? I mean, I know that there's a lot of other people here too, so if anybody else has anything Okay. Yeah. Other thoughts? I mean, I know that there's a lot of other people here too. So if anybody else has anything else they'd like to share on this, let's hear it.
Just wanted to clarify what Marty was saying. So the waiver is related to individual metering of all the units.
Right, not to the fact that they have to.
That, that I think you've already told me.
Great.
Okay. No, just making sure we're clear on.
And that was never a requirement in the code. So there's no waiver there. It's just clarification of how to distribute it. I think the other question of um, when a project like this comes forward that has a hundred percent electric, a lot of solar and other locations, a hundred percent affordable. Do we say you're meeting so many other goals, you don't have to meet this one? And I agree that that's a bigger conversation. I think that that would be yeah, helpful to have some direction on, but.
There, there was something we talked about the other day, which I forgot. Um, let's see what the energy use is for each unit, and it may fall under the low energy category. So there may be some things in the code that could help, that you were gonna talk to Mark, I think, about that. So we need to, there's, there's a few avenues to pursue to help answer that.
I think they're just under a timeframe where they have time to keep.
But if the answer's already there, I mean, it's
Yeah.
I can work, I can work on that.
So I wanna go to something Jared asked before. One of my experiences was with Lot One in trying to understand goals versus rules. And so there were uh, the desire was to build small buildings. So there are eleven buildings that have a hundred and fifteen units instead of three. And one of the implications of that is some pretty funky stuff with the solar that I think Jared's been dealing with. And one of the questions he asked was if you have two small buildings, or in this case, there's four small buildings, and you want to put all of the solar on one roof because you know, utility scale solar is about a buck a watt, maybe less now. And we're looking at four or five sometimes north of five dollars. So we're already doing probably the least efficient way to try and uh, I, address that goal. But then if we can't put all the solar on one roof, because we did the condo subdivision, and we started talking about how do you do that? Well, then you create this agreement between these lots that tie them together after you just spent a year trying to untie them. Why does the town care? And if you can meet the solar, uh, I personally don't understand why there's the hundred and fifty percent. If you do it in eight, one, six, two, three, but there may be information that Jeff has that I don't have. But to me, the goal is to get more renewable energy into the local grid. So if going back to the school district, if they want to do the roof at bridges instead of on three different buildings with fifty different meters, how, how is the goal not met? In my simple way of looking at things, and it costs less. So the same thing with Lot One. If we could do one building with all the solar and what difference does it make whether, you know, building H or building L has it? But right now, when Jared gets that application, he has to say no. You have to build eleven solar systems in order to meet this requirement, which to me is the least efficient way of trying to get it. And if we're gonna make substantial change, which seems like it's on everybody's agenda, I think we do need to think about how to do it efficiently and what it costs.
I thi- I think the issue with that is about, it's an Excel issue, not a town issue, right?
The town code will not allow that. It's, it's not an Excel issue.
Will allow it to have all the solar on one building?
Correct.
Not, so it's not the energy code. It must be, it's a different code.
Well, it's.
Isn't it all one project?
No, so.
You're saying it's four or eleven? I'm not sure how many built, five building. So you're saying you can't, the town won't allow that?
That's, so that, that's part of the, the question with.
That, that's part of the question that we have is if the intent is just to get more solar. To Bob's point, does it matter where the solar is being built? Or is the intent to get energy cost reduction to tenants? Or is it the combination of the two? Because if it's, any component of it is energy cost reductions to the tenants, what Bob suggested of just building larger solar arrays really isn't gonna help achieve that necessarily. But if the goal is to just green up the system and build solar arrays, then you know, to his point, if they put one large solar array on building E, which is, I think, the big, the big building at the corner of Main and Hendrix, then wha- what does it matter for buildings L and K, which are small four-unit buildings? So I, I think that's kind of where we were asking the intent of the, the trustees.
Even if the logic building
Correct.
gets sold to somebody that isn't part of the marketplace.
You, you.
You still have the same amount of overall solar to meet this goal that's stated in the R A B P ordinance to promote a local self-sufficient energy economy.
And to me, that's the same thing with being within the eight, one, six, two, three zone district versus the hundred and fifty percent. It's never really been clear to me what the policy direction is, unless you just, you want to see a lot of small solar systems and to me, the problem is too big to uh, to be inefficient with it. And the second piece of it is that the cha- the rules for net metering are under, they're gonna change. And those of us who are in Holy Cross got our first wake-up call. I have two onsite solar systems. I have a solar PV system. I used to own solar and uh rifle through the C E C. It created six percent more per watt than my home system. But if I was to try and do that, that would be a hundred and fifty percent penalty, even though it would generate more electricity. But any rate, uh, the, the net metering is gonna change the way we get, those of us with solar systems get repaid in three point O. And we're, we're gonna get half or less than what we're currently getting. So the payback times go away. And s- still a good thing to do, and I would still do it. But not everybody makes the same amount of money I do. And we're trying to get people to live close to their homes closer. And so something has to give in, in all of these equations. Each individual piece of this can be a relatively small portion. The solar is one percent of the total project cost. But then there's, you know, the Parks and Recreation Board, and there's the Tree Board, and there's the, you know, and it just goes down the list. And all of these together, we have to, I think, look at efficiency of, you know, are we getting what we uh need to make change in the most efficient way?
Thanks, Bob. Um, I feel like we need to start getting toward a close here. So I think we've given staff clear direction on one part of this, which is we're, in a perfect world, we'd have both, right? Both the things that I think Jared laid out, the both of those goals of renewable energy creation and greening the grid and lowering people's energy cost. But when there's a inordinate cost added to create both of those, our priority is adding to the grid green energy and not worrying so much about exactly how it's metered. Is that right? And then, so hopefully that's helpful for this project and others that are going through the process. The other question, do we want to give any more direction on that? Um, about potential exemptions, waivers, anything like that, or is that another conversation to come back to?
I feel like it's a separate conversation.
I still feel like I need more information, or I don't quite grasp it entirely.
Okay. Well, I think the, the second question is just when a project is meeting a lot of other goals, like we've got a lot of goals. Affordable housing, electrification, solar energy production. You know, if you're meeting some of those, do you, do you have to meet them all if you're going above and beyond what we're requiring? In my mind, the, the nature of the energy transition that we're living through so rapidly right now is moving in such a positive direction that most of my focus has become on electrification. And it seems like if we can prevent putting in a gas line that's gonna run for at least the next thirty years, we've accomplished a huge part of it. And I'd rather start to rely on the utilities to do the greening that they're promising that they're doing and re- require less of individual property owners to get into this whole um solar business. So it seems like if we electrify everything and the grid greens up, then we don't have to worry about so much onsite solar production. Um, okay. Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I'd be happy to work with um any staff or anything to help come up with this, including hang out with Jeff a lot and get this figured out. Um, because I do think it's worth, you know, there was this really compelling article that RMI put out a couple of years ago, which I've quoted a couple of times, and I really should just have it on hand. And it, you know, they, they did a study where they looked at, you know, the carbon impact of this high-density housing in town of all these projects we're discussing, and how that is overwhelmingly beneficial to the climate. Then even if the, all those same people drove EVs, or, you know, they kind of had this comparison. And so I think just bigger picture, as we're looking at this and as our gr- our grid is getting greener and um acknowledging that these costs that we're hearing are pretty outrageously high compared to what other solar installs um are going for. Then I do think it's worth revisiting and just seeing like, is this the best bang for our buck for where we want to focus and have our staff focus? Or do we want to put our resources, time, energy, capacity and money into other climate uh work or pursuing that next thing? So um, that's where I'm definitely looking at it and wanna, um, I would like us to come up with a, you meet these other goals, then you do not have to have solar on your building or offsite. Um, I also think we need to change if it is eight, one, six, two, three, a requirement, because uh, that's really limited. Um, and most of our entities.
I think that's codified, but I have read it as being what the board wants.
Okay, yeah, because um, all of the community solar, that all the different entities we work with that are buying into, those are in Mesa County. So um, we wouldn't be living by our own requirements of others, and I just think we should. Anyway, so I'm happy to dive into it more.
Mesa County is, is not gonna be supporting our local solar industry if those are being built there.
Okay. I mean, and this is a good example of how quickly the transition is happening and that we should be adaptable. Things that were passed just a few years ago um, may not make as much sense now and two years in the future. So it sounds like we want to tee up a conversation on um, the bigger picture of exceptions, exemptions, waivers, whatever, to the um onsite solar requirements soon. JV, do you feel like you're gonna have the direction that you need to keep your project moving forward?
Well, I'll be calling Lauren
Okay.
As soon as she walks in the office in the morning, then we're gonna talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else to add? Riley, you stayed silent. Okay. Okay. Anything else from the board? All right. Thanks, everybody. Meeting's over.